It is 7 o'clock. We'll open the meeting. I want to start with an administrative review of 243 Riverneck Road. A comprehensive permit was issued as a request for an extension of the approved comprehensive permit for project 243 Riverneck Road. The original approval was on March 2003. I would like to speak in behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. John McKenna, the petitioner, Riverneck Road Realty Trust. We're requesting the extension of the comprehensive permit for three years. Princeton has submitted a letter indicating their desire to continue with the...
We have received it.
And I'm here for the beneficiaries of the trust, to represent the beneficiary of the trust. We'd like to preserve our rights in the special permit as well. So I'm here in support. I'll turn it over to Attorney Brown, who will talk about the details of the extension. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Jeff Brown. I'm General Counsel for Princeton Properties and its various development entities, including Princeton Development, Inc., and Princeton River Metal LLC, the current holder of this This permit, as you stated, was issued in 2002 or '03. I can't remember. It's occupied most of my life.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years of litigation and back and forth. But I think we've reached a conclusion of that litigation, and so we are seeking the extension of this permit. We are the holder of the permits, and we are the owner of the land of the one town which the permit is granted. We have other permits that would coincide with the development and order of conditions, conservation and management permit. So we do request under 5605-12C, an extension of the permit for a period of three years. I spent a great deal of time over the last two days speaking with Evan Malansky and Town Council of Paul Haverty. So I think through Paul's letter, there's been a good outline for the board as to what are the parameters of the 40B regulations under which this permit can be extended, and we're seeking that extension. I think the only thing of note that is somewhat a little bit disorganized is this original application for tonight's hearing was submitted by Mr. Crandall, as Attorney McKenna indicated, to preserve his rights, whatever they may be in future negotiations. So we did not submit our request within the 48 hours of this hearing. So today, I did submit a formal request on our own, so whether the board wants to consider the request that we made in opposition to Mr. Crandall's request, which was submitted within 48 hours, or our separate request on the seventh. I can't tell you the procedural process in that regard, but I'm not opposed if we need to figure that out, if we need to continue this hearing until the next one, so that our application wouldn't be within the 48 hours of the hearing. Again, we did make a similar request within that time in a March 6 letter, and then speaking with Paul Haverty, said, "Why don't you submit your own request?" So I gave that to him. So that's why you see two separate letters from Princeton.
Okay.
If there are questions regarding the property, the permit, what's going on all that time, I'm happy to enter them now, or if the matter needs to be continued.
Does the board have any questions? We did receive Mr. Haverty's letter, and he was fairly explicit that basically, without a substantial change, which the application to extend is not a substantial change, and I know no other change, regardless of the entity applying, I think we're pretty well bound to extend the permit at this point.
So the board is aware. I mean, we've made similar requests, and the analysis has been similar, but further regs. It is not a... It is an insubstantial change, and so previous requests for extensions have been granted by this board.
Are there any questions? I think I would ask for a motion to extend the comprehensive permit for 243 Riverneck Road. It is not a public area. It's administrative.
Do we have the first rule, whether it's a substantial part of, and then decide whether to...
I think that would be best. Yeah, we should do that. So I don't think there's any question that there's been no change, so there really can't be a substantial modification. And extending it in itself is not considered a modification.
Right.
So where nothing has changed, I can't imagine it's...
Do you want to put that in a motion? Do we make a motion?
Why don't you choose to do that, though? Would you make a motion to terminate it? It's substantial or insubstantial.
All right. I will make a motion that it does not constitute a substantial change to the comprehensive permit.
Do I have a second?
Second motion. Who's voting on this?
Yeah, who's voting?
We have a full board.
There would be five board members, so myself, Steve, Nancy, Charlie, and Mark.
Okay, so we need a second for one of you.
I'll second it.
Is there a favor? And I think we should also...
I'll make a motion to grant the extension for three years as requested.
Second.
Do you get the same boarding members? All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Our next public hearing is continued. Nine Rogers Road, the estate of Phyllis Clark, for a variance under Section 1959 of the Chelmsford zoning bylaws, conformly for law area. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Greg Halladine. I'm here for the estate of Phyllis Clark, and the children of the Lake Phyllis Clark are here. Just to give you a brief recap, when we were here last month, I told you that 66 years ago, my client's grandmother, Lita Clark, acquired a lot, Nine Rogers Road. It was an available lot. It was protected from any zoning increases over the years, but the problem arose in the early '70s when my client's grandmother improvidently granted it to her son and daughter law, my client's parents, Bernard Clark and Phyllis Clark. It was then a buildable lot when they transferred it, but I said improvidently transferred because once it was transferred to Bernard and Phyllis, my client's parents, it merged with the neighboring home lot that was owned by my client's parents. Bernard and Phyllis are since deceased, and even though the family no longer owns the abutting lot that caused the merger, we are now the owners of this isolated lot, which is Nine Rogers Road. The town council had moved, and it merged for zoning purposes with the lot that we no longer own, that was held by the parents. And the town council said that the only way we can get this lot to be owned, which is what it was intended to be, is by a variance. At the last meeting, we showed you a revised plan. We paid for copies of it. We significantly reduced the size of the home, and I believe on the... I gave it to Halliday electronic format, the plan itself. I think I had warranty copies, but...
Yeah, we have the copy this year.
Oh, yeah. It should be the...
Which one?
Plan.
I gave it to you also.
Well, partly. Second from the bottom. And that's with the reduced size house. And it's now proposed to be 28 by 40. I don't know if that fits in with the neighborhood. As you can see, it's an odd-shaped lot. It has two side yards. We meet the requirements on those, but we do require a variance for front yard, which we have now expanded to 33 feet. And that's about as far back as we could get from Rogers Road due to the drop-off in the top of the rear of the lot. Since the last meeting at your request, we staked out the foundation, showing that that land. And in fact, I hope you had an opportunity to see it. I've got some photos I can show you later, but the point is, this is a lot that has always existed, and it will continue to exist regardless of what happens. It's been separately taxed and assessed by the town for the last seven decades. A building permit was granted to use fill for when the sewer was put in at Rogers Road to help prepare it for building at some point. I've lost some of the lot. There was a sewer stub made available to the lot. It was assessed a betterment, which the Clark family paid. Variance here is not creating a precedent of splitting up an existing lot to create two small lots. This is a separate lot that always existed, owned a lot. And what we're asking for is just to correct an injustice that happened because of the transfer, unknowingly creating a problem some 30 years ago. Because of that common ownership, which no longer is even an issue, we're now stuck with this lot that requires a variance. This is the type of action that we believe the board can address to create, to solve and provide equitable relief to the family here, who has lost completely the use of the lot that was intended for what is seven decades, and have a separate building lot for the family. And as was pointed out by the building inspector at the last meeting, there were some questions about drainage in the rear. And if a building permit is to be issued following drainage variance, that drainage issue will be solved because any runoff from the house created will have to stay on the lot. If it's granted, there's not going to be any hope of resolving issue of drainage. There are some photos of the neighborhood. I assume you all got an opportunity to review it, or at least you had a chance to take a look at it. Foundation's staked out. Mr. Clark can address some of the photos and tell you what they are. He took some photos, and we'll be available for any questions if you had a chance to hear from Mr. Clark.
My name is Alan Clark. I'm the personal representative of my mother, of Phyllis Clark, and the reason why we're here is I'm trying to settle the estate. So as the attorney said, you know, this has been a lot for a long time, and I don't know, you know, last time, I don't want to repeat everything that we said. We wanted you to have the opportunity to go out and look at it. We staked it. I don't know if maybe you could... I don't know what... Whatever picture you put up, I'll give you one.
Okay.
So the lot in question is over here to the right. This kind of gives you an idea of this is a house directly opposite, and when we talk about the front setback, when these homes were built, they didn't have the setbacks that are required now.
Is this the one we're going by now?
Yeah, that's the third effect. What do you...
The altar. I'm looking at the one that's online.
The one that's online.
So this is what we're...
This is the envelope we have now. It's 28 by 40. 28 by 40 is the envelope we have now.
So this is... This is our abutter's house. He's spoken at each hearing. You'll see both on the Rogers Road, which is on the left, and Rodden Road, which would be in front, Dunsborough. That, you know, as is typical of all the homes in the area, the setbacks are much different than what current zoning requires. That was my aunt's uncle's house. This is another abutter. And again, same typical type setbacks from the front. We need our setback from the front because of the topography, which slopes down, which will allow us to be able to deal with the grade. And this is a typical house that we'd be looking at that could fit onto that lot, substantially different than the initial request, but it takes into account the terrain so that we could have a garage under that would come in, and we would actually be removing some of the fill that was brought in to be able to accomplish that. This is the lot that was... Shows where that footprint is. It's difficult in that picture to be able to see, but this yellow line that goes around is staked out, is that area. And you can see where a portion of that lot had been filled in, and I think there's another picture. There had been testimony that we... My father filled in and caused the drainage problem and also extended it into the abutting property, and you'll be able to see when we get to that that that's not the case. This was our house in the... Right there. That's the lot where the arrow is now. This is Rogers Road, which, when I grew up there, was just a dirt road, and we used to bake the sand or not the sand so that we could slide down this hill and come across the road and go down prior to that being filled in, go down into the next property. So this is the lot line. So the lot is bounded where it abuts my parents' house, but the lot line runs from that state to the corner of that white house that you see in the distance. And so you can see where the fill had been put in. And this, over time, has kind of overgrown and did originally have somewhat of a swale that carried the drainage. It came down off above us, came across this lot, and then down into that swale. So that's just another view. That was my parents' house. Again, the house would sit in here. It's a fine lot. There's nothing wrong with that lot, and certainly there's no wetlands involved. And again, you know, not to be dead hoss, but house in the neighborhood, again, showing the front setback that's typical of that neighborhood, that subdivision. We're here. You know, we're here. We've always thought that this was a buildable lot. That would show that same house that looks awful funny just from the angle, but the rear of the house would be at grade, and that would allow us to direct the drain, any drainage issues in the back that would affect our abutters, and I think would fit that neighborhood very, very well. So again, had my parents, when the law changed, simply transferred that deed to me, it could have been any of my siblings, but I think I was the only one of age at that time, we wouldn't be here. And it's simply because they weren't aware of the law. We've paid taxes on that for over 50 years. The town gave us... Gave my father a building permit to prepare it, to take that fill in, and so we're simply here asking for you to do what would be right to make it equitable to my family, recognizing that we need the variance to allow it to be a building lot and to reduce the front setback from 40 feet to 33 feet. And last, you're not creating a lot. The lot exists. It's just not buildable right now.
Did we get another letter? I see an email, but another letter.
There is a letter about this position.
From the abutter? Okay. This is the letter. I see they had some photos available.
Yep, I have them to put up on the screen.
So the photos we've reviewed already? Are there more?
No, there's more from the abutter.
So I have a letter I'll read in from Carolyn LaRosa. "Good afternoon. We'd like these photos available for the teleprompter at the next zoning and appeals meeting on 37, discussing Nine Rogers Road. We are the abutting property at 60 Dunsborough. Thank you for your assistance. Carolyn LaRosa."
I think it was Charles that was going to speak. So do you want to come up?
Good evening, board. Thank you again. My name is Charles LaRosa with 60 Dunsborough. I'm not going to repeat everything I've said at the last five meetings. The last meeting we ended with, we needed to continue this so that the board members had a chance to drive by the property and take a look at it for themselves. I'm assuming at this point that has been done, because that was actually how we ended the past three meetings. So I'm really just here hoping that at some point we can just put it into this one way or another. I really have nothing else to say. This is my property down here. So I've said everything at the last five meetings. I really need to see. I'm one of the neighbors that are opposed to this building, this permit and this variance.
There's a couple more photos. Do you want us to stay in this place?
Hey, no. No.
No?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, board.
That's his backyard. This is the backyard, and then that's...
That's the... That's the next... That's my neighbor who also abuts, too. This is the yard that Flutts owns right now, since he's not here. He also had sent a letter in. I don't know if he has got it, I don't know, for this meeting or one of the past five meetings.
Yeah, I think they've been already. That was the only one I found.
So I think this is just really showing the incline, decline from the property. Their property is way up here. This is their old house.
That tape is...
You know, the yellow tape is the property line.
That's the property line, and that's their old house, but this is a slant, a slope that can't be explained unless, I hope everyone's driven by instinct, but it's... You can't really explain it. It's a steep incline.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or opposition to this project? To the podium?
Good evening. My name is Adam Vella. I represent that Ten Rogers Road, which is directly across the proposed lot, which is at 11, I believe. I have not been able to make the last few meetings. They've been rescheduled and postponed and continued for a number of times. One of the things I wanted to point out was that we have existing setbacks in zoning that are reflective of the current character of what the neighborhood is like. So pointing out that a number of the other homes do not meet the current zoning standards that came afterwards, we know that, and they're in place because of those reasons. We do not want the additional extra housing to clutter up and make it a very condensed and dense area. Right now, I have a very large backyard. I know my next door neighbor, the Gillets, have a very large backyard. On the other side, Number 8, the Mark's house, they have a very large backyard. Should we all just sell our backyards off so we can make a few bucks? I've been living in this house for 20 years. This has always been one lot across from my house, and the idea that someone's just going to build a house right in front of my house, like, this is not a very wide street. The pictures, I hope you've been out to a lot. I don't think they adequately represent the size and the smallest of this area. Right now, with the snow we have on there, you're lucky to get two cars down that street. When that, you know, big garbage truck or whatnot comes, well, I forget about it. That street's blocked. And now that we're going to say we're going to add another house with another driveway, I can't even imagine the type of implications that's going to cause. Additionally, I do know that we did some research. Was the issue of the Mitchell versus Board of Appeals ever resolved? Because I know there was some case law that prevented the board from actually acting and modifying a zoning based on that.
I'm not familiar with Mitchell versus the...
I think it was addressed by Haverty at the last one. Didn't Bruce ask that question? Bruce?
Didn't.
Oh, the Mitchell... I don't know what the Mitchell case is.
Oh.
Okay, well, we have court rules.
Is it Chelstra?
Uh, sorry?
Is it Chelstra?
It is... I have the case cited here. No, I'm sorry. It's from the Board of Appeals, but from Massachusetts Appeals Court. 27 Massachusetts Appeals Court, 1119. I know it's been referenced here at another hearing we had well over a year ago in regards to the same property, and I never heard anything further signed. I know the town council, I thought, was going to work into it.
I don't recall how that ran or the... I don't know.
I believe there was a showing that they had to have a true showing of hardship, not just, "I've lived here for a long time, and my parents own the house, so you should let me do it." I'm grossly in objection to this. I know a lot of my other neighbors are as well. I just wanted to get a chance to speak with you about it.
I appreciate that. I understand you're at your position.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or opposition to this project? See, then, I think I accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Nancy?
It's a plea by this.
Oh, this would be the five.
I wasn't here last time. I wasn't here last.
So it's... From my recollection, it's... No, no, no.
It still needs to be brought up.
This variance was only started the last year. All the others were the administrative. So you weren't here. Nancy, you weren't here.
It's just my notes reflect this. Ms. Brown, Ms. Morenci.
Mr. Reedy.
We need to just end.
Aaron.
You don't have a name tag on it.
Aaron. So that's why I have that as well.
That would be our position. That would be the five who heard us.
Yes, that's why I...
So those will be the five voting. We need a motion to second from both five.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. So it is obviously a very difficult choice of question.
Those of us who were not here from the last hearing, who are not voting, are we discussing?
I think you can discuss once it's closed.
We can discuss. Yeah, we can discuss. You just don't have a vote.
Sean, do you feel differently?
I... It would normally be better that the people who were not here did not weigh into the structure.
Yeah, if you weren't here for all the testing, that does make sense. Thank you.
So when the public hearing is open, they can ask questions as they see fit, but once the hearing closes?
Deliberation should be between the members, probably. So deliberate. I drew five. I did. And it was very narrow. The pictures don't give you justice.
Now, really, it's hard to...
It's small, but a very steep.
Well, according to the plot, plane... Huh? Not on the voting field.
No, Jamie is...
What, you were here last week? Yeah.
Yes.
I don't have any doubt.
It's Jamie, Nancy, Brian, Charlie, and Alan. Why, Jamie?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't know why I had my name there.
So I went out there and walked it, and even with the snow, no snow, the edge of the house is lotted to go to the edge of the cliff. I don't want to call it, I mean, it's pretty much what it... I mean, drop-off. So I'm not quite sure. And if they're putting the garage, they're going to put it at current grade with the road, so they're going to...
I think they anticipate putting that, actually, a story below the... When the fill removed, so the front yard would maintain its height.
How would they even do a drive?
In this...
Because they have to do like a...
On this certified plot plan, there is a driveway drawn in. It's certified. But I think that would be a bleed. So if you drive in, you look down to that.
So this is Dunsborough over here, yes? This is the old... This is the other lot, right?
I mean, we probably need to turn around and have to put a little bit... I think it's when you go down the hill so that at the end, pull it out.
Is there a locust up top? I can't expand enough to see it.
So this is...
There's a locust here. This is my expanded, it doesn't show me a lot. I don't know if there's a locust in there.
Plan, or do you want me to pull up the GIS?
I have the same results. I was looking at the area lot that shows the neighborhood.
I could pull up the GIS.
Yeah. I just don't see how... Because, I mean, the lot, the front of the lot is flush with the road pretty much.
Yes.
So how could they dig down for a garage?
Look, I think what would happen is a retaining wall would devise the front yard for the driveway, go down here.
Right, so then they would... Okay, so they wouldn't be keeping the whole grade.
In my opinion, logistically, it can be done. It's a... It's, it's a very tight lot. My concern more than is it, is it a good place to put it? Is it right that it goes there? I honestly think it's a lot. I think it's always been a lot. They paid tanses on it for fifty-odd years. There's a sewer stub.
Yeah, but there's a reason why they merged it at one point for zoning purposes.
No, they merged it because they, they made an error based on testimony. If they had, they dated it from, I don't know the original owner.
Grandma Lita Clark to...
To Phyllis and her husband.
Exactly.
I feel like I should know these people.
I mean, I understand how the, but when it came to zoning and when it came to zoning, the town felt it necessary to include nine Rogers Road in with the primary home lot.
No, the town didn't.
No, no, we didn't, cause I was asked to separate the lot.
Stay lodged.
Stay lodged together to try to create a most conformant lot to the locals.
Right, to create a most conformant lot.
Right. I just, I'm having trouble with the hardships.
I mean, I see the, I see the shape of the lot and hardship. Would you mention the last one?
The topography by itself is, if it was a level lot, would you feel differently? A flat level lot, didn't have a drop-off, would you feel it more, more compliant? If that's the case, then the hardship is to topography. I, I struggle with it. I don't, I don't know the right word.
Because if you see where the lines are staked out too, they're like at the bottom of that drop-off, of the actual property line. Well, that was just the property line, isn't it? But so if the, so if the, so what Brian's saying is that the lot actually was flush and straight up to that property line, there would be more room in the back behind the house. You know, like, we're looking at it, we're saying it's a drop-off, so you're thinking, oh, the house is gonna be so close. But if the lot was flush, uh, you should be... But then the drainage and all that would be...
They're, they're still required to provide drainage for the lot. It does not allow the water, as calculated by engineer, to leave the site without being treated. So they're, they're gonna have to overcome that regardless of what their topography is. But you can't, you can't build this and every time rains, the rain goes into your neighbor's yard.
But that's like a problem for them to overcome with the building inspector at a future time. It's not for us to decide drainage is going to be a problem, right? That's what I understand the plan here. That's not something for us to be said.
If, if the building inspector says, or the town engineer says, you, you just can't do this drainage for whatever reason, or doing it is so expensive, it's prohibitive, then the house wouldn't get built.
Yeah. But that's not for us to figure out, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, part of, part of the decision here is made specifically on whether it's a buildable lot. That does not grant the issuing of building permit. The building permit would decide what the drainage needed to be, what the position of the house needed to be. Just because that's where they're showing placement of the lot. That is not where, the house, I'm sorry, that is not exactly where it ends up. That would go through the building permit process.
Well, but our variance, whatever they do end up building, would have to, the footprint of the house would have to...
The setbacks would have to remain the minimum of what you guys require.
Of what we approve, yes. So those requirements would say...
Right, the envelope itself is what we would approve. A forty by twenty-eight, I think is what we're looking for.
And then if they want to change that because of a drainage issue or something else and bump it forward more, they would have to come back and add it for us.
And if that's what's decided through the building permit process, we would elder that's what we have to do because of drainage.
Yeah, for me, it's a question of was it a lot and is it a lot? Even though it was, was cajoined, I don't, I don't think they did that with any intent to lose their rights. I don't know how much that, that matters because they did do it. It did become cajoined, but they had a sewer stub. I mean, the intent was clearly that it was a lot. So I, I am of the opinion that it is a buildable lot, even though it's a difficult lot to accept. It's really not, you know, that's how I feel about it. But I know it takes a moment, I don't know the flavor of the board at all, honestly, I don't know what people are gonna think.
I agree. I'm quite to agree. I feel that if it was a buildable lot, it should be a buildable lot and it shouldn't change because of the administrative state that automatically we have to.
I don't think that is the case.
And I do think there are hardships also besides that. I do think the topography is a hardship, shapes in the hardship. Even in addition to that initial, I agree with you on that.
It creates a hardship, yeah.
Brian, I usually agree with you. I usually agree with you, Brian, but in this case, I have to go back to the letter from our town council that says it is not a lot. So I might listen to the town council a little bit.
I can appreciate that. It's a difficult decision.
If it emerged, that would be more incentive to people, oh, sorry, I'm just gonna sell this piece or convey it to someone else so I can get rid of that. And then I, I'm more internal to that. It was, they merged for zoning purposes and you can't try to go around that by selling just one piece when you were, are using used to get yourself.
Well, I guess we can put a motion out there and see what happens. I, I, it's a difficult decision either way. I see the pros and the cons very clearly. So would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, I don't even know how to make a motion. How do I make this motion?
You would make a motion to approve. We always fill in the affirmative.
I want to make a motion to approve the variance.
At nine Rogers Road.
At nine Rogers Road.
As shown...
As shown on the certified plot plan.
On the certified plot plan, I think we should define that because we've got a couple.
And dated, cause there's more than one.
And, yeah, the date and maybe save it an envelope of twenty-eight by forty.
So I make a motion to approve the variance at nine Rogers Road for the certified plot plan dated January 18th, 2019. This is it, right?
That is correct, twenty-eight, twenty-eight by forty?
Yes, twenty-eight by forty.
That's it.
We should call out the hardship as well. So that would be the topography.
See, the topography.
Won't you, don't you?
I have a second.
A second motion.
A second. Jamie, public favor. Two opposed. They opposed, taking the, the application is denied. Thank you. I know you put a lot of work into it and I appreciate your neighbors and your, your points of view. It's a, it's a difficult decision.
Mr. Chairman, we respect the board and certainly, I have said before, I appreciate the fact that you people donate your time to be, offer this very important service to the town. We understand, you don't agree, but we thank you for your time.
New public hearing. Chriskey and Chadwood, Scott and Durkin. They placed special permits under 195-AD for the CH2, which are the new thousand and ninety square foot addition, which will include a new garage and living area and will not meet the size requirements. Will be over the thirty percent allowable by right and any other relief that may be necessary. Good evening?
Good evening.
Your David address?
Oh, Scott Durkin, Chadwood.
Do you want to take a shoot what you have planned? I think Colleen is gonna burn it up on the floor.
I'll give it up there.
Scott, what do you have there? Is that a garage that's gonna be added there?
So we're adding a garage with a small mudroom off the back and to the, to the left of that. We're pushing that kitchen back.
Into the proposed addition here.
It's the pictures.
Is it a single story?
So I have pictures of... So it's a garage. So it's, it's a garage. You'll see the small bump out to the, yeah, right there. The reason for that is when they originally put the second floor on, the back deck has a second story deck because you can't get large furniture up and around the steps. So what that is gonna be, it's from the inside of the garage, it'll be an accessway for us to get larger furnish, furniture in the house. But it's, you know, touca garage. Then we'll extend back on the back of it, there'll be a mudroom. And then that'll, that'll be the back windows for the kitchen. That'll be, those three windows to the left are sort of the mudroom that's off the kitchen. I mean, off the, off the back of the garage. And you'll see that, that transit window up top, that's where the existing second floor balcony is. We would have to lift stuff up currently to, to get large furniture and mattresses in the house. Obviously, with the, the peak of the, the addition, we wouldn't be able to have that. So we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to build a set of stair and right, take it right through there and then cut in through the, the master bedroom door. Which kind of shows the steps.
Can I ask, why it's a special permit for the, for the twelve-foot-six segment?
Uh, pre-existing non-conformity lot.
So they wouldn't get a variance regardless of...
Regardless, it would just be a special permit.
It is non-conforming, then originally it was thirty-five from the front.
The design's pretty similar to the rest of the houses that have gone from the traditional ranch to a second story.
How far down?
Uh, come up towards the other way.
The other way?
Yes. One more. So it's the one on the left now. Up one. Not that one. To the left.
My other left?
Up towards...
I just love that one.
I'll go back.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think a lot much. Board have any questions on Mr. Durkin? Seeing done, I'll, I think I'll read the letters first, then we'll open it up. A letter from the Chelmsford Fire Department regarding fifteen Chatham Road. Entire home and existing new construction shall be equipped with life safety systems as required by seven eighty C M R fifty-one, standard for new construction at the time of application for a building permit. Home will have hardwired interconnected smoke, carbon dioxide and heat detectors in all required locations. Three copies of the plans that clearly show all the required life safety devices shall be submitted to this office as part of the building permit plan review process. The office would approve of this addition with these conditions. Ask that the board make this letter part of the approval process. Respectfully submitted, Dan Costas, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter from the police department with no comment. I have a letter from Roger Sporel. Dear board members, Scott Durkin has shared his plans for the renovation addition to his home at fifteen Chatham Road, which includes a touca garage and budding my property at eleven Chatham Road. I have support, I am in support of this application. Thank you, Roger Sporel. Is, is number eleven Scott here, a medium of butter to the...
Yeah.
Oh, you're here tonight.
Yeah, he's here.
He's on the right side. Okay, that is all my letters. If anyone in the audience would like to speak in their favor or in opposition to this application?
Mr. Chairman, may I make one request? I didn't get to write a letter for this project. However, we've been seeing some problems with these garage connections through homes with doorways that are connected. And not that it's a problem to do it, we just want to make sure that you are protected as the fire department said, carbon dioxide detectors. But I'll also look into a fan that is connected to that carbon dioxide detector. With remote starts on cars today.
Yeah.
People are hitting them from inside the house, they're running in their garage. You have a direct access to your bedroom in that garage. So there are fans that connect to carbon dioxide detectors that will stop once, once that alarm is gonna sound and take the Casio right up, so.
Okay.
And that door will lead to be a fire door as well.
Correct.
It's one of the bedroom doors. Twenty-minute rating, I think.
All right.
So would be anyone else is speaking tonight? Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, just, uh...
Just approach the podium and you can name an address for the...
Sure. I need a rock and scroll under the eleven Chatham Road. Uh, my, I, I don't really see a big problem with his, his expansion. I just, uh, want to ensure that what's being extended from this house is only what will be allotted, like, in the future if he wants to put a deck say around the side of it or anything like that. It's not just, well, because he got this, now he put a deck around that.
Wouldn't give him any more rights than he has today. He would have to reapply. And if he's, if he met the setbacks, I don't think he'd need a special permit. If he was to add a deck and he met the setbacks, which would be on the side twenty-five, he would not need to come for the front or rear setbacks as well.
Okay.
So he could add a deck without coming to the Board of Appeals as long as it is within the residential requirements set forth.
I think he's, sorry, he's asking aside on his house.
So that would definitely, that would be back to the Board of Appeals.
Yes, yes.
He would need to go through that process.
And he would be notified here?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
If he put a deck on the back, it ended up at twelve, what, seven feet from the, so it didn't increase his nonconformity, would he have to come back?
If it, well, if it increased the non, if it didn't increase the nonconformity of what he's getting, if he was approved today, he would still have to come back because he's increasing the nonconformity of what is allowed by right.
If he was twenty-five...
Just because we're allowing him for the addition today, doesn't mean he has the right to go to twelve-six all the way down the property.
Okay. That's, that's what I was, yeah.
He could add a deck as long as it was twenty-five feet away.
Twenty-five feet away, he would not have to come. Anything less than that, he would have to come.
Right, right.
So that's what I got out of his question.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Second.
Nancy, public favor. This will be Mark, Charlie, myself, Steve, Nancy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit on fifteen Chatham Road under one ninety-five dash eighty, subsection one, in consideration of the certified plot plan dated November twenty-nine, two thousand and eighteen, and with regards to other letters written into the public meeting.
I'll second.
Second, my Nancy. Public favor. Janice.
That's it?
Thank you very much.
But I do feel very strongly, he is doing, he's... Our next area is nineteen Elm Street, Elizabeth Haynes. Put a special permit under one... for a special permit under one ninety-five eighty-two to construct a new thirty-five by thirty point five two-story addition, which will include a new garage, living area, and a five hundred square foot covered deck that meets all setbacks, but will be over the thirty percent allowable by right and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening.
Good evening, dear board members. My name is Sushma Nafshar from Targaryen and Sei, representing the applicant for nineteen Elm Street.
Do you want me to get you the stand-up tripod or?
Oh, this one, please. And is it okay to open it here?
Yeah.
I don't know if I can see a lot less than you see on the screen.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's all right. I mean, I just have some elevation views. I can lift it up. When it comes to that. Yeah, existing house is an older house and which is, which is basically the footprint, which is in the background, in addition to this part, of course. So this is the existing house. It's a single family dwelling and part of it is two-story, not the entire house is a two-story house. There, I guess children are grown and the, the family has outgrown the existing house and the existing one-car garage, which is here, is, uh, the, the foundation is filled with stone, which is really falling apart. And the wood frame is really old and structurally, it's not really, doesn't have that much integrity. And also the family, while replacing the existing garage with a new garage with cast-in-place concrete foundation and new wood frame for the current code, also, they would like to add this addition to be used as a, they don't have a master bedroom actually, it's a master bedroom or family room. Also, in order to, mainly to be able to connect this to the main house, this deck is being proposed in the back, which is provide access, it's a covered deck and it would provide access from here to the rest of the house and to the garage. So to avoid having a direct access from garage to, to, to the addition. We meet all the setbacks and, you know, this is existing nonconforming in terms of some of the front setbacks. So with that, I guess, the applicant is requesting a special permits for the proposed addition.
So extending the nonconformity, but we don't need to approve that because it is a pre-existing nonconformity.
Correct.
And then it just becomes a thirty percent.
Because the addition is.
No, it's just thirty percent.
Oh, it's just a thirty percent.
It's just thirty percent.
It's, it's.
Yeah, everything else is conformal.
That's our approval.
Everything conforms to that.
But, yes, the addition does meet on the second. I also have some pictures of the existing house. So I have some elevation views of the proposed, the post-construction, how it's going to look like, and also the, some, some photos of the existing house, the front, how it looks right now.
Okay. I'll look at those, I think I'll read the letters. Regarding nineteen Elm Street, the Fire Department, the, uh, has reviewed the proposal for the addition at nineteen Elm Street and finds the following. The entire home, existing and new construction, shall be equipped with life safety systems as required by seven eighty CMR fifty-one, standard for new construction at the time of application for a building permit. The home shall have hardwired interconnected smoke, carbon dioxide, and heat detectors in all required locations. Three copies of the plans that clearly show all required life safety devices shall be submitted to this office as part of the building permit plan review process. This office would approve of this addition with these conditions, and I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Dan Costas, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. And I have a single other letter from the police with no comments. This time, we're gonna open it up to the audience. If anyone would speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Now is the time. Seeing done?
Portion to close?
No, she must be cutting over. We have a portion to close and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Really stirred.
I agree, I don't see any on. I think, are we, are we still looking at the fall, the spring town meeting for the override of this thirty percent?
Yeah.
No.
Not the thing, the way we set it up, uh, we talked about before, if you're just going over the existing, uh, structure, we don't need to change.
We don't see anything hook, right?
If we do, when you, when you go up, you do not need to get a?
That, that would just be.
And then we won't go to town meeting and we won't look for a break on the thirty percent?
Well, the thirty percent we may, but it has to go through the planning board.
Planning board takes it.
By law change. And we'd miss spring town meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I think we'll find with what we're doing, I don't even think.
It'll reduce, this particular application would still come before us. This particular, this application would come before us.
Because it's expanding.
Still, this is expanding.
It's really not changing, okay. Still don't see a problem, but I'm just trying to keep it straight.
Yeah, thirty percent should be.
I'll make a motion to accept the special permit, to grant the special permit for nineteen Elm Street for the addition highlighted on certified plot plan. Just pull it up and find out the date. On two-six, twenty nineteen.
Yep.
Second, I agree.
Second, all in favor? Anybody? Do you have any of us? Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Our next application is seven Mallory Street. Joshua Moncar. Is seeking a special permit under one ninety-five six point one. He struck a limited accessory apartment over existing garage with outside stairs that were further encroached on the side setback and any other relief that may be deemed necessary.
I thought it was gonna be your son.
Well, this is Joshua.
Come on up, Josh, this is for you.
I am Christine Archard, my husband Phil, son Josh, seven Archard. So, we have an existing garage with finished rooms, the, uh, two rooms have already been finished a while ago. So, um, Josh is having, and Jack's Gillette, his girlfriend, are having baby. So we're gonna have them, the, over the garage. So we're making it an in-law apartment. And, um, we wanted to, uh, to make here, uh, this is the, you know, it is attached to the house by an open porch. This isn't in the closed space, so, um, we have, of course, there's an exit from that space here onto the porch, but we wanted to put another exit on this side with a six by six porch that came down here. See, we only have eighteen feet as it is, so this would bring it to twelve feet to this paper street.
And that's a paper road?
It's a paper road. There's only access to a garage that actually the property owner owns on Shore Drive. And, uh, it's a, he came by last year on the ferry to get it, you know, and the garage opened back. But there's pretty much no use on that road.
I mean, it's, it's, people, he does use it, but we just leave it open, it just.
It's an open road.
Is he the butter on the other side of Billis Street?
Um, uh, no, that's actually another family who lives, it's kind of down below. And that's Shore Drive there?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's kind of a steep home that goes down to their home. So they're really not near that. And he's, is that Shore Drive where he is too, over there? Yeah, in the back.
It's your Shore Drive. They have two Shore Drives that split after the mailboxes and put in a lot back. It was a second deed rest that he should have put on the side.
Yeah, I can see why you wanted there. I was gonna talk to you about putting it on the back, but it seems to make sense there and where it's a paper street.
Yeah, I mean, every, all the, the whole road is, everything is kind of grandfathered in. There was just a house approved that was built three years ago and it's only separated by twelve feet from the house that was already there for years. So they let that go through and that, it was pretty tight. I mean, at least there's no, nobody next to us at all, so, well, obviously, no one was complaining. Our neighbors were pretty supportive of what we made of it because it wouldn't change anything, really.
Want something? Yeah. Just because it looks better, doesn't mean.
It must be on this. Right, in fact, we can just, uh, ask the groundsman, it's, uh, it's probably too bad.
And maybe I'm missing quarter square footage on the limited access.
It's, just to, I was just talking to Sean about that. So it's already existing, um, they're just gonna file the deed restriction?
Right, but I was told you to know what the square footage is.
Oh, okay. What is it, eighteen by?
For the garage, it would be about twenty-four, about twenty-four, five, seven, six.
Yeah. And is it gonna include the breezeway or?
It's already there.
No, I didn't know if they.
But it would be considered. Everything's already there.
Do you want, do you want to look at this? This is the fire department has just approved this, if that helps. But, um, this shows our existing main house, open porch, and the garage with this.
And so it'll just be here?
Yeah.
We're just gonna see it's up, it's being built now because it's a by right build in existing space? It doesn't need approval? That's a.
No, just wanna make sure square footage, it's about right. Otherwise.
They just put another door.
You know I'm looking at the door.
Okay, I'm gonna enter the, the letters into the record. Regarding seven Mallory Street.
Now, one, one question, can I see that drawing one more time? So the stairs in the back, there too? So I'm looking at the front here?
Yeah, you're looking at the front of our main house, it's right here.
So, right here?
That's the back, that goes down into the, you know, that's the back behind it, inside though.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
One interior. I just looked real quick and I thought that there might be exterior stairs that are two apart here, but they're not, they're interior, so.
So regarding seven Mallory Street, dear members of the board, this department is concerned that if there are more than one dwelling on a property, the met occupants should be identifiable from the street. This office will require two mailboxes identifying the property as seven Mallory Street and seven A Mallory Street. The applicant shall submit an application to address the Chelmsford nine-one-one committee and its coordinator, Town Clerk Tricia Druess. This department is not interested in official change of address being recorded on the deed. It is only our intent to distinguish this home through emergency responders. The limited accessory apartment and existing house shall be hardwired with smoke, carbon dioxide, heat detectors according to the current Massachusetts State Building Code. The applicant is advised to contact the Fire Prevention Office prior to submitting plans. This office will approve this plan with these conditions. Ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully, Dan Costas, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter from the Police Department with no concerns. I have a letter from the North Chelmsford Water Department with no comments. I have a letter to whom it may concern from Ann Casella. I object to having an apartment built over an existing garage. I'm concerned about the parking to support the additional individuals that reside in the apartment. As additional tenants will require parking spaces which the current drive will not support, they will be parking the street and blocking the street access. As the neighbor in the past parked, as, as the neighbor in the past has parked his construction equipment and his current cars in the road called Dover Street, which is used to provide access to a detached garage, the neighborhood is not zoned for rental properties. Regards, Ann Casella.
What, what do you know about that?
I don't even know who that is.
What was that?
Her name is Ann Kinsella, she does not give an address. That is all she wrote.
Well, the, the thing is that we have an enormous driveway with a circular, it's all paved in front of the garage. We can sit numerous cars.
I think they can see that quite clearly.
Also, a lot of those cars were our neighbor across the street's kids that kept parking there. And we finally got it straightened out so they can't block it because they hardly have any parking over there. We have a ton of parking where we live. We have, yeah, it's all paved in front of the whole garage, it's circular. And we never park on the streets.
Okay, well, I think she's concerned about being a rental property, it really will be. So it's, it's a little different, she, she's probably nervous about that. But I don't know her address.
No, she understood what a limited accessory apartment is and requirements and back to people doubt.
And certainly illegal rights, yeah.
Right.
Shouldn't be approved.
She was right.
I'm gonna go into the audience and see if there's anyone that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application?
That's our property right there, that one, please.
Next time, there's no doubt, there's just a basic piece of property.
Seeing done? Set the motion?
Well, before you set the motion, can I tell a little story?
Absolutely.
Wouldn't be a reality story. Back in the last century, there was a couple people and I, we wrote the, um, LAA zoning. And, um, it was a long time ago and they put additions in it. But I know there's one thing that they kept in it that we put in ten years ago was, um, the limited access apartment can not have more than two occupants. So what we figured when we wrote it, that the parents would be in the apartment and the kids would be in the house. So, so if we do approve this, maybe we should mention that? Because it's against zoning.
That's still in there?
Yeah. Well, this is the brand new one you just gave me.
And that, it's still in there, I just never, I never read that, so.
And so it's wrong?
That's it, that's right.
It's, it's in here.
Right.
So.
But you did for family, so.
Yeah. Shall not have more than two.
That's really not a story.
That's how we wrote it.
That's a position, yeah.
That's a position.
Yeah.
So it's a story too.
Yeah.
So that's all I wanna say.
If you, if you want, you can note it in the decision that you're allowing.
But at this point.
Two speakers over there. See, for our, that's why we made it for three minutes.
Simply says, an LAA, an LAA shall not have more than two occupants.
What section? It says shall.
Uh, one ninety-five, six, one, D five.
Oh, they're not much to me.
Never had to consider that before.
No.
But I can remember.
I think it's always been the same, so.
Of course, it's only two occupants. That I can see right now.
Well.
That's why we wrote.
We've learned, I've learned two things from your presentation.
I don't know deeply we wanna go into this, but we are approving it for two occupants.
You guys are gonna have to take the baby on your side and get my parents, there you go.
We do.
They, they'll love that.
We're assuming it's gonna be like a blended kind of thing, you know?
Excuse me, Ryan, my father doesn't know that there's three, so.
No, we don't.
No, we don't. Well, there's not three right now.
Well, no, I didn't ask.
But we can't, not, not to ever wish ill will on any child, but we can't.
We're approving it for two occupants, uh, you know.
Technically, that's by law is not an occupant yet.
Yeah.
Well, at this point, there's two occupants, that's the request. They will appear on the.
Address this, the plan to change or modify, but tell me, but tell me we'll have to go, we'll have to change the law.
I'm, I'm not sure we want to change it. I find it kinda silly because you are saying that the in-law goes to the, you know, the parents or the, you know, I mean, I don't know.
But that would be to, as for.
Enforce their lifestyle, I don't, I don't, you know, which is.
Also, you guys aren't married, right? So, it also says extended family members as well.
Which we opened up to au pairs, uh.
Was it related by blood, marriage or adoption to the owner of the property or to the owner's spouse or person providing nursing or adoption? So, he would be that.
And maybe there's some other you think that's necessary.
He could be the nurse, the, you know, the care. Or she's providing nursing.
Well, if it was.
Today she's not.
Brian, if it was seven hundred and sixty feet, square feet, right? We could, we could rule on that with additional relief. Why isn't we could make some kind of provision for that?
We can override.
Right.
But I think, I think we can do it. My actual thing is, I'm not quite sure why you wanna make it an in-law.
Doesn't have a kitchen?
Do you have a position on that?
Is there a kitchen there?
I have a position. Yeah, it's gonna be a little bit different from, from probably everybody. Definition of family is two or, two or more. And we say directly in there, family. Two or more.
And then we limit it.
Limited to family.
No, so it shall not have them with two occupants. Yeah, and.
Definition of family in the state code is two or more.
As, as the building code defines family.
Or more, but we've specified in our.
Yeah, right.
Mm-hmm.
That the family is two.
And then it does specifically call out family. Individually.
What would, uh, what would make them make this an LAA though?
I don't know, we went through this before.
Could they come for, for a permit and for the work without the LAA and would it be approved? Putting a room over a garage that would have a kitchen, a bath, and a mound of bedrooms.
It could be approved, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I would think too.
You have as many kitchens by law, by right, as you want any household.
When, when this was formed, that was not the case.
Right, right. Then it wouldn't be limited.
You, you could do the addition, you would still need the special permit for the setback. And I don't think we ran into the thirty percent on this one.
And then, no, it's just for the staircase.
It'd just be a basic.
We can just do an addition.
Yeah, you're not changing the envelope or anything on the structure.
I would, I would, I would say with the, the.
But, but you know what, it's not even an addition, they're just putting the stairs.
Right, but they're only putting the stairs.
The rooms are already there.
Already finished.
I, I think.
In there.
The rooms are there. So, they don't need, because they're adding a kitchen?
No.
They're saving the kitchen, but it's no more.
They just need the relief of the twelve, the twelve foot for the egress portion.
But they don't need the, uh.
Oh, I see.
We, we, we've, uh, we don't have to, which is restrictive. LAA, we won't be in violation. You can live over the garage as safety allows.
That's, that's the route I would suggest to go.
Me too.
Approve the, uh, deck and stairs.
Prove the twelve foot setback for the egress, um, as proposed.
I wouldn't call it a, a, a.
Withdraw the LAA.
But the building code would handle.
Yeah, we did this before, that's where we call.
No, we, we want to apply for as an LAA.
If we can't change, if, do we change?
Two front doors.
Because, well, because we've, we've asked for a, a higher restriction with the LAA, LAA.
So, it's less restrictive.
So, we can change to a less.
Because we've advertised for worse.
If we prove the deck and stairs, you can book a, a building permit for the deck and stairs.
The advertising is right here and it talks about the stairs, so you'd be living in your right to prove it.
So, still granting the relief, just reducing the budget.
Without nailing it as an LAA.
What about any of the letters that were written, does any of that change?
Would change any of those?
Cause you're gonna fire the person.
Right, but if they're not, if they're not considering this, that would be.
Yeah, you're told this, we have to wire.
Yeah, you're definitely gonna do the.
I think, I think the seven A seven.
For the address thing.
The seven A seven.
If we jump all in the LAA, then you would not be required to have the two mailboxes, uh, in port to the night one.
That's what I was thinking, so do you need to have that redone?
Right.
But you, you probably.
You know, they just wanna be the requirement to do it, I mean.
Right.
Right, we, we can approve the stairs and the deck.
I just wanna make sure we can do it, so. We're looking at simply a, a, what is it, thirty-six by forty-two set of stairs, set of platform and a.
Six by six.
Yeah, and they went on a twelve foot full, uh, paper street.
Right, we, we can approve that and not vote on the LAA. You can come back to the building department and apply for the permit for the approval of the stairs and the deck. And that's, but, you know, the other word you do, the life safety device and stuff, you'll need a permit for.
We'll fall to the permit, okay.
That'll still be a process, but you just won't have a limited accessory apartment, but there's, there's, it's gonna be easier for you. It's just a better, better plan and we can listen to Charlie's stories and be happy instead of sad.
No, that's a good call though, I didn't realize that was there.
Yeah, no, it's worth looking at.
I read that a hundred times and never got it. Once I hear family, I think, as long as it's a family and it's.
We've never had that before, it's always gonna be the other way around.
Right.
So, can I just, just to be clear, so what do I have to do then, as far as the issue with, I know that was the safety concern about whether, you know, cause they're over the garage to make it, to make it.
That, that's all in the building code.
It's all in the building code and just like the other gentleman I spoke with, he'll have some requirements that, that we're gonna ask you to do to make sure that, if there is some toxins in the air, that they get mitigated right away. It's a world of electric stuff and people don't like that. Auto stuff.
It's, it's, you don't smell it, you don't anything, so it's worth doing.
Got one question. We read a letter in from the fire department, it says we, they have to do A, B, and C, depends where it was. We are now saying they don't have an LAA, can we neglect half of what the fire department has put in the letter that we read in? Because they're not doing the LAA.
But they just withdraw their petition and come back, do it for the stairs?
They don't need to, you just don't have to act on the LAA question.
We're gonna approve the steps, assuming that we're in favor of that, I'm not speaking to anyone else.
Just leave the LAA.
Just don't vote on the LAA.
Then we're not gonna vote on the LAA. They would not be required to get the mailboxes because they're not an LAA. And they would be required to do the life safety because that's crazy not to anyways.
And just, just so you know, the, the fire department's letters are pretty much in the building code.
No, do they need to do that afterwards?
They just like to be really long.
Not on our application, they, they were coming out of the building department. So, they don't have a building permit yet, or do they?
Yes, they do, they do.
You have a building permit?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we haven't put the stairs there, you'd be waiting.
Yeah, so, so, they have, and that's, that's where the water gets a little muddied in here is, they were perfectly fine doing what they're doing, once they needed to put that stair on the end.
That's a problem.
That's what brings them.
Okay. So, you'll get a building permit for the stairs, if this is approved, gonna get, I'm not trying to speak for anyone. Though I see a.
And all the regulations that the fire department did, uh, put in there are being met, being met except for the nine-one-one, things like that.
Because it won't be required because they're not in LAA. They just have a room over the garage.
They do need to submit the occupant load to the fire department.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes perfect sense, I just didn't know. We can modify, because we, we always say with regard to the letters, the letters say this.
We can say, approve as the letters are applicable.
See, she's a lawyer.
Right? Legalism over here.
Lawyer and an engineer.
Like that, it sounds like an awful lot.
Lawyer and an engineer.
Let me, uh, let me, uh, go with the lighter or what?
They just have us common folk.
Can I get a motion to, if everyone's comfortable, to close the public hearing, is there further discussion?
You can go.
On the favor? We'll take this out. Is, is this, is everyone comfortable with the?
Yeah, no, definitely. It's just more administratively how to do this properly so that it goes to.
Right, so it's correct, that's not creating a problem.
Thank you very much.
If it weren't there was a third, we'd be all set, so.
So, I will make a motion to approve the special permit under, is it a special permit, so?
Yes, it's still fresh.
One ninety-five dash six-one to construct a stairway as.
Actually, leave that six-one out because that's a limited accessory apartment.
Yeah.
So, this would be under one ninety-five, eight E two. Eight E two. To construct a stairway as.
And that, six by six, yeah.
As depicted on the, on the, January thirty-first of two thousand nineteen, taking into the applicable provisions of the letters I wrote into the record.
Well, select a second map. All right. On the favor? Uh, so we're left with it?
There you go.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everyone, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know what you have there?
Couple, oh, my first Grinch.
Always get someone to watch you.
Okay, moving right along. I think, I think that's a good solution to that, I think that's the best way to approach it. Twenty-five Research Place and Terra Branding LLC is requesting a variance under one ninety-five, thirty-two, A one and three, B one and C. See the allowable number of wall signs, see the square footage, unpermitted advertising on directional signs, and install an additional freestanding sign above signage in excess as what is allowable by right and any other belief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening, sir. Name and address.
My name is John Brenner, I live in South Carolina, Camden, South Carolina, twenty-three sixteen Multry Road, South Carolina, Camden, South Carolina. I represent, I work for Antara Branding and represent the owners of Jam Sanho Hotel Management and Ruchel Hospital. The plan is to put, replacing Hawthorne Hotel, the reimagining of Hawthorne Hotel with a Marriott Hotel, which is a higher status hotel, I'm sure you're aware. Element is a brand that used to be Starwood, which is now a part of Marriott. It is, uh, it's, uh, it represents a certain clientele, sort of a, sort of a relaxing atmosphere. They, they have, actually, I was in, I spent most of the day in the place. Putting a lot of money into this and looking at a nice, nice building. We have four channel letter sets. Two of them will be placed on glass curtain walls, one on the front, one on the rear, and they are in the center of the building. There is another set of channel letters on the end of the building facing the large highway. You'll have to forgive me, I'm not familiar with what that large highway is, it's out there. Now, finding the place is rather difficult to get back Research Road, it's not a very prominent location. For that reason, they have placed another set of channel letters on, from the rear of the building, on the right-hand side, to allow visibility from the road that's back there, there's like a pizza place back there behind there and that, that area of, of property. The square footage, from what I was able to gather, I believe the calculations relate to the front of the building, if I'm not correct. It's the square footage of the front of the building, we allow fifteen percent total based on the square footage of, of the front of the building, which is ninety-two oh five, I believe. Fifteen percent of that would be somewhere around thirteen hundred square feet. We're asking for eight hundred and eighty-six total square feet. And these, I believe, were calculated using the entire block of, of the sign. Oh, here they are, here. This is the third, this is your, this is, from what I can tell, the violation of the code. This sign here, it is the second sign on a given elevation from another state. Is that correct?
The two signs on the.
Actually, this is the rear of the building.
It's a drawn male facing sign.
This is the one facing the highway.
Yes, yes.
No, 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 this is facing three.
Yeah.
It has a base three.
There's another sign here that faces a large four lane, it's very prominent.
So, that end cap would face the.
The car dealership.
So, that actually faces, uh, close enough from the car dealership.
A town center.
So, that is the violation that I, I see. I note also that in the, uh, on the agenda, there was some notes that stated that we are in violation of unpermitted advertising on directionals. Element and Marriott has certain brand standards. I think what we're seeing is this sign here is the one that you're talking about, this is rear entry sign.
That's the front.
This is the front of the building.
Facing the hospital.
Which does not face the highway, right?
Yeah.
No, it faces the medical center, it's tucked back in there.
I've, I've known.
It's the front because it faces Research.
This fella here is tucked in, as you, there's, you can pass the medical center area, he's tucked in here and he is back easily fifteen feet from the, from the street and he is eight foot high and forty square feet. And he will sit exactly on that same spot where the existing sign is.
So, that would be the cul-de-sac area of his building.
It is a very difficult to.
This, I believe, is the one that is the violation that he has. He has a logo. Now, where he's going to sit is again on that elevation that has the two signs and he'll be sitting there right as people walk in and then they'll, as they pour that parking lot on that side, this will tell them to go into the building. There are other signs throughout, there's a, this is the, that's the detail of the rear entry sign. There's a parking signs, they are very, these are expensive parking signs. These babies are like six, seven hundred dollars a piece, they're very complicated and this is a high-end hotel. It reflects an image that people will pay dollars for, it brings in a good customer. You wanna scan through some more of these babies? Again, these are just the parking signs, they have the proper number, I believe, there's been no violation there. And they don't have any logos on them. And, uh, this is parking notice sign, again, no logos on it, it's just, it takes a spot on a liability. And there's a smoking area sign, again, no logos on it, it just indicates where these people can smoke. And again, here's our site. So, um, again, here is the front of the building with sheer made entry. And this is the, this is where the, there's a sign here, there's a sign here, there's a sign here, and there's this fella here. So, these both are on glass curtain walls and this is on, uh, just, just wood. So, he's on a nice brown, uh, piece of, some nice fascia that they're putting on there. And, uh, that will allow visibility down in through here, I mean, you've got nice visibility here. There's nobody can see this sign at all, there's nobody can see that. And this one's tucked in pretty good here, this pretty much gives symmetry to the building in the end at this point.
I have a signed advice, we need this one.
Me, can't afford it.
You have a signed advice?
Can't afford it.
Apparently evidence is getting this figured in there too, so I'm gonna read a letter, the only letter, I, actually, I have a couple, but the only letter of substance is from Evan Belansky to the zoning board regarding twenty-five Research Place, the Olympic Hotel. I received the application, submit the following for consideration. It appears as though the four sets of HIT logos and letter set signs are proposed. One in the front elevation, two in the rear elevation facing the Drunk Hill Road, and one in the side elevation facing the road ring. Four primary logo signs seems a bit excessive. I would suggest removal of one logo sign and that such elimination would be appropriate for the rear elevation facing Drunk Hill Road, so that there is only one logo sign in the rear elevation. The signed bylaw, section one ninety-five, twenty-five, one defines internally illuminated signs and states in part, luminance of sign elements shall not exceed two hundred nits during nighttime operation. Nits is a reference to the brightness of a light. Based on my understanding of the application and signed bylaw, the proposed logo lettering will be LED and as such not exceed two hundred nits. Previous practices require the sign installation included dimmer switch so that after installation, the LED lights can be adjusted to comply. The board should see clarification on these issues prior to decision. Evan Belansky. I have a letter from the police with no comments and a letter from fire prevention with no. I have a letter from the police with no comments, and a letter from fire prevention with no comments. Those are the letters.
Based on this thought plan here, what is the sign that Evan is suggesting?
He is, I think he's saying that from.
Wouldn't kill this.
The one on the.
The one on the.
Well, you know, these, these are, these are, they are necessary to the architectural integrity of the building. In that you've got these glass curtain walls on both sides, and that's, that's the building, you know? This one here is added to relieve the fact that you can't see any signs, except this fella here.
I'm gonna tell a story. We approved the C V S in the Stop Chumma, and we were strict on the sign ball, as we said, you can put it here, you can put it there, and they simply wanted one to face Boston Road. And we're like, there's just too many, and it's gonna be fine, you have a sign here and a sign there. When you drive by that building, you cannot see what it is, I, I know what it is, but it, it was wrong to do that. And we even talked to them about that again, and they, they weren't interested in pursuing it, but we, it made a mistake, and I understand why, you have to allow some signage. It's obviously a large hotel, that's as close to the highway as it is, it really doesn't lend itself to getting there, unless you know how to get there, I'm sure it's, it's a bit of a challenge. Maybe GPS makes that, less, less work now. But it is, you know, my opinion that these are businesses.
Yep.
They need lighting, the directional, the lobby, the smoking, you know, I would, I would see the side advisory committee look at those, and you, you have to allow those. You're not doing anyone any favors if, if you don't have some direction and where to go and how to park, and, you know, so my personal opinion is that they would be fine as they are. We went through a pretty lengthy process at the Madison or the Holiday Inn, actually.
Holiday Inn's right.
And came to the conclusion that these are, you know, they're, these massive signs, when you look from the highway, they're not, they are a good-sized sign, but.
Yeah, and I look at this every day, as you know, I look at this every day. So I've been looking at the size of these facades, where you're gonna put those out there, and with the, with the building in front, it's really difficult to see because it's kind of tucked back and, you know, once you get around the corner, it's gone, so you don't even see it. So coming up the off ramp.
Very limited set.
And seeing that, I, I don't really see that as a problem personally, from, you know, from my vantage point.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I spoke briefly with Evan this afternoon. We have had numerous issues with complaints from the Holiday Inn, from people who are on Westland, you know, with the brightness of the signs.
Well, that's just.
Yeah, I think the idea of the dimmer switch.
I, I think the dimmer switch is an absolute must, so we can adjust that.
Monitor and adjust it, yeah.
As we have complaints, which is what I'm working with the Holiday Inn for now. So that is, that is a definite request.
Right.
Well, you know, you agree with my brightness.
These particular signs are not white-faced, these particular signs have perforated vinyl on them. So that during the day, they will look gray, but at night, the perforate, there's little holes in the perforated vinyl that allows some of the light to come through.
So it kind of looks like it's glowing, but not being.
It will, it has a glow to it, it's not gonna be a very, very bright sign.
With all due respect, I'm the one that's handling it, not from South Carolina, so dimmer switch works.
Are there any residential areas around there that we?
There actually aren't, which is good, but that doesn't mean that we still don't want it to be within the code. So I think it would only be in your best interest anyway to do that. You know? To use your now than later.
Is it, no, that was, that's the Kinder knowledge begins.
Yeah, there is, just off the other side.
And on the corner is the.
I've done some, some work on this Holiday Inn, even though it is, Westland is across the highway.
Highway.
It's right.
It's, it's good information, I hadn't heard that anyone was bothered by it, it was really the biggest one I think we've done, but there'd be seven signs.
Spend my time out there, not only doing chicken and rats.
Had to bring it up.
At least you can see it with the light.
That's why he told us apartments across from McCarthy.
There's no leaves on the trees this time.
It's really not allowed.
So it's a very, it's a very minor change, I've asked Holiday Inn, the Holiday Inn to do it, which I believe this is the same, same group. So they know that we do, so I think it's easy enough.
No, definitely, I think it's a good, good recommendation.
I'm not going to go into the audience because there's no one here. I guess I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close.
Mark and it's, because it's a.
Second.
Come on, man.
All in favor? Would anyone like to think about a motion, or do we need to discuss some?
We could discuss the, the thing about Evan said, to take one sign away, I don't agree with that.
I don't.
I don't, I don't either, I do appreciate the dimmer switch, I think that's a good idea.
I agree with everything else.
It's kind of unique that you, you see this from so many places, but you don't see it, it really is tucked away. So the additional, and I, I won't say at C V S, I, I wish I had, you know, we were trying to do the right thing, we didn't want signs anywhere you went.
Well, that's because we didn't even want backlit lights there, you know, but we had no choice, we were kind of forced into it.
Right.
Where, you know, we've got a brand new clean slate here in the new area.
Right.
I don't, I don't think it's applicable here, we're more concerned with that light in the village area, this is certainly not the village area.
Yeah, you could see.
It's a whole different zoning situation.
Market basket sign from so far.
Right.
Like the C V S across from the library?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole, when you drive by there, there's no indicator that it's C V S, and they wanted to put one there, and we said no.
Except for entry into the parking.
In my opinion, it was a mistake, took on a lot with hindsight, I did, I was, I was on board with what we did.
We would have rathered two goose neck lamps, then no illuminated sign, just on all sides.
Right.
That would have been nicer, but it's not, wasn't zoned properly for lighting restrictions in that area at that time.
So the internal was acceptable, the external lighting wasn't.
It's just too bad, it would have looked much better. That's why we need a sign advisory committee.
Well, how you're gonna sign? How many?
I mean.
I'm sure for a sign baron.
Can I be the sign baron?
Oh, I don't think.
I don't think there's a.
No, there's no.
Just serve any other.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion, I make a motion to approve the signs for twenty-five Research Place with the exception of Evan's letter being read in. But allowing all the signs as proposed, so what we're saying really in essence is that we do want the dimmer switch in there per Evan's recommendation, and that's it.
I'd say, I think he.
We could go. Well, it was one of the three rare signs. Yeah, it was one of the three rare that he was recommending, and my motion is to approve all the signs with the, with the exception that they had a dimmer switch.
The dimmer switch is installed on all external lighting.
To make sure that they don't exceed the output required by our bylaws.
It's, it sounds like you feel you'll make that anyways.
Yes, sir.
But it'd be nice to have the ability to adjust it if there is a problem.
You can watch.
I think they're working hard to, to make that happen at the Holiday Inn, so.
So there's four major signs, is that four dimmer switches or?
Dimmers on all.
Yes.
All internal.
All external.
Cause it's also, there's also other little signs around the parking lot.
Those aren't lit.
Those aren't lit though.
Except for mine.
They'll be reflective of the cars and see them, you know what I mean? And they don't have a logo on it, so we really don't call it, it's not a true sign.
Mm-hmm, yes, true.
It's a safety.
That's just, there is the one that's, that's replacing the Chumsford Inn, that's not lit, that's, that's lit.
Yes, sir.
That, that would require dimmer as well.
Need a dimmer on that, okay.
The four children. We have a second, second. Second, ladies, all in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy your song.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, it's been a pleasure watching you.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
It's the most exciting part of your trip.
Many years ago, I actually, I actually served on a zoning hearing board, and my hometown, Holiday Inn, Burton, Pennsylvania.
Didn't have as much fun as we do, though.
It's great. You guys do a thorough job, so. Good to watch you work.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Glad you're here for the stories.
Enjoy. Um, can you forward me the specs on, on the output? I'd like to see.
Yes, so.
Can I do a motion? Did I do a motion?
Well, I'm sorry.
Am I even on the minutes from last week, last one?
I did, I made it.
Do we have minutes to conclude before we do?
No, I, I have them, I can send them out, so if you guys have a scene.
I mean, just, I like point, point of order. Next meeting says March seventh. Did I? Is that true?
Yes.
We're not March seventh.
Nobody thought that, I would, you people look at this before I host it.
Thank you, thank you. The next meeting is. Now, now you remember I'm actually here. April fourth. April fourth, noting. Oh, you know what? Just before we close it, as of today, I have no applications for that one. I still have a week, there's no week.
So don't.
First time since I've been here.
Don't, don't waste any time letting us know in the event that that's.
It's a little, it's a little meeting. And hopefully we won't have to go. Okay.
I'll let you know next week.
So that going over the existing footprint makes a huge difference, and it's about forty percent of the volume I normally see.
Oh my God, no, it was eighty percent of everything we saw.
That, no more forty, we.
And it was a hundred, it was a hundred percent approved.
Because it's, I mean, we all agree that we're a positive zero.
Motion to close the meeting?
Sure.
Motion to adjourn? Second, I approve. All in favor?
Thank you all.